Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. If I can get my Rainwater to be quiet for just a few minutes. Thank you guys for coming, Monday night, council meeting. It's a good night, I tell you what, there's not anything greater when citizens show up and voice their opinion than, we're excited to hear what everybody has to say. And we moved up the, on the workshop, we moved up the workshop session, we'll call it to order at this time, and we're gonna, we're gonna move the discussion for the proposed Lampasses-Burnet County rail line up to the, to the front of the agenda, and, and see where we go.
Mayor and Council, I'd just like to summarize the memo that was included in your packets. I did contact the surface transportation board on Friday and spoke to Adam Asanza, who is assigned to this case. You may recall that on March 3rd, you should have received communication from STB regarding this proposed rail line that gave an early April deadline for response on environmental review. Since then, revised correspondence has gone out that gives an April 14th deadline, and that was confirmed by STB staff, and that's purely to receive comments for the environmental review. And what they have said for this project is that it's currently in preliminary stages with STB, so it's not even in front of the board for consideration at this point. They are going to be undertaking the environmental review. They have not done a site visit yet, that is scheduled for sometime in April, although he did not give me an exact date. Currently, the way the project is classified is for an EIS, which is an environmental impact study, which is a one to two year process for STB staff or the environmental portion of the agency to complete. Typically, it does take the two, the full two years. Instead, on certain projects, they can become reclassified to an EA, so environmental analysis, which is a shortened process. That's dependent on the length of the rail line and the feedback that they're receiving on the project. He did indicate with the amount of feedback that he's getting.
Need to talk into the microphone a little bit more?
He did indicate with the amount of feedback that is coming from the public already on this project, it is unlikely that it will be reclassified as an EA. It does have a one-year timeline instead of a two-year. So they are receiving environmental comments currently, they have to conform with NEPA, the Environmental Protection Act, so they will do a thorough environmental analysis. It will include endangered species studies, traffic studies yet to come. So again, this is preliminary in the process for STB, or denial. You probably have some folks here to speak to.
And at this time, we wanted to give citizens' comments to be able to bring their views on the rail line, and we'll have three minutes per speaker.
I'm Mickey Edwards, landowner and third-generation Lampasim and seventh-generation Central Texan. Thank you for letting me speak. I know the city council doesn't have a lot of impact on this issue on the railroad, but it will impact our citizens and our traffic patterns and our safety. So I'm speaking in opposition. I think it's a project that doesn't need to happen. It's a private enterprise, it's not, it's not a government entity. Imminent domain is in question, I don't know if they have that authority or not, so that's a question. And you think about 183 and 190 and the property owners, it can be a great impact on our, our community. And if it impacts our community and our citizens, it impacts the city. So, thanks for your time. Thank you.
Evening, Council, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I promise you won't have to put a stopwatch on me, I'll make it short and sweet. I'm a wildlife biologist and a consultant, and I work all over the United States and different parts of Texas, and I do a lot of eminent domain work and habitat and evaluation that has to do with eminent domain. And I wanted to express to y'all the intricacies and the disruption that this process will do to these families and this land. Even, even as deep as estate planning right now, it has already influenced property values. Once it's presented, once it's in the front, it always affects property values. I would tell you that anything I can do to answer questions for you about the eminent domain work that I've done across Texas, I'll be glad to do it. And I hope you hear the issues with the, the public and the landowners of this county, because this is gonna affect all of us. And as I said this morning in the commissioner's court, this is the real deal. This, it's easy not to be affected if you're not affected, but this is about all of us here today. And I hope that you understand that we're serious about being in opposition to this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Bill Hinckley, I'm representing the Bar H Bar Ranch, which my family owns. And the first thing I'd like to say is thank you all for your service. This is not exactly a high-paying gig, so I appreciate your time. I would also like to take ten seconds of my three minutes to thank everybody in this room. It has been inspiring in the two-week period that we've had to see this community come together against billion-dollar adversaries with deep pockets. So, I'd like to tell you what I think is going on, I'd like to tell you how it affects you, and then I'll tell you how it affects me. Because what we have here is kind of heavy-handed and sleazy to my mind. These people tried to rush this through the federal government, and their plan, after I've talked to them, my lawyers have talked to them, it is obvious. They were trying to seek approval and then tell us about it. So the day you get the letter that we want to come on your property, we have lost totally. So this idea that we're gonna sit back, the guy patted me on the shoulder and said, "Don't worry, this is preliminary," is bull. They know what they're doing, we were treated like a bunch of hillbillies that weren't gonna figure it out, and we have figured it out. So, please, just have our eyes open to our adversary, because that is huge. Now, let's talk about how this might affect the city. You're in the shadow of Austin, this town is going to grow, and I'm a developer, I've developed all over Texas, and once a railroad is in, you're not putting a fire station on the other side, you're not putting a school on the other side. You don't have a roadway plan for the future. And once this is there, it cuts off a third of your town, and you are basically king's ex on anything you wish to do over there. And I can promise you, this idea that they're gonna give you a crossing is not true. Their answer is no. You can take it to the bank. So, we can get into public safety, we can get into schools, we can get into danger, all that stuff, but at the end of the day, it ties your hands on growth. So just be aware of that. The other thing that's going on is, let's just go back to the 30s. How much time do I have? You have a Georgetown Railroad sells this property to Texas Materials, and the Texas Materials is going to use either Georgetown or somebody else as their common carrier. They have this figured out. So, gosh, it's seven seconds, I don't know how I'm gonna pull this off, but anyway, we've got six square miles of land that we have put together over thirty years, bought from willing sellers, didn't condemn a thing. And during that thirty years, we buried loved ones out there, we have taken every cross fence, anything that is man-made, and removed it and turned it into a paradise, and they want to bicycle it. It's not right, it's not fair, it's not good for the city, it's heavy-handed, and I invite you to connect the dots real simply on what's going on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stephanie R., and I started the petition, as well as the Facebook group. I just want to say thank you guys so much for showing up, the amount of support, it's amazing, and I'm just glad to be here. So, I'm kinda short, I have to move this down, there we go. I am a sixth-generation settler here in Lampasses, I guess you should, you could say. The Ward family is my ancestor, they settled here six generations ago, and were very instrumental in making Lampasses into what it is today. I wanted to share some statements with you guys. I believe that the proposed Texas Materials Railway will significantly impact the city of Lampasses, despite claims that it will primarily affect only rural areas. While the route may technically remain outside of the city limits, its proximity and multiple highway crossings will create substantial disruptions for Lampasses residents, businesses, and commuters. The railway's path is slated to cross Highway 183, Highway 183 and 190, two major transportation corridors vital to the region's economy and daily life. Frequent train crossings will create delays, increase traffic congestion, and compromise public safety. These highways are essential for local commerce, emergency services, and residents traveling between Lampasses and surrounding areas. Regular train blockages will hinder response time for first responders posing a direct threat to the public's safety. Additionally, the railway's presence just outside the city limits will still affect property values and future development. The noise, vibration, and visual disruption of frequent train activity will diminish the appeal of nearby neighborhoods and deter potential home buyers and investors. This will stifle growth and reduce the tax base negatively impacting Lampasses' economy. The environmental consequences are also concerning. The railway will, will cross sensitive waterways and habitats in Lampasses County, potentially threatening local wildlife and water quality. Increased dust, increased dust, noise pollution, and potential runoff from construction and train operations will directly impact the surrounding ecosystem. While Texas Materials may frame this project as a rural infrastructure expansion, Lampasses will undeniably bear the consequences. The railway's close proximity to the city, its major highway crossings, and its long-term economic and environmental effects cannot be ignored. We urge the Surface Transportation Board and other local authorities to recognize the substantial and lasting harm this project will inflict on the Lampasses community and to reject the proposal accordingly. Thank you guys so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Richard Higginson, and I'm with RITD Engineering and Surveying. I wanted to speak with regard to Lampasses and Burnet County rail line project, which our company currently has no involvement in whatsoever. We just learned about this project recently when we saw an article posted online. Our company provides design, engineering, and land surveying services predominantly for private rail development projects. Our headquarters is in the Houston area, where most of our projects have traditionally been located. The closest project to Lampasses that we are currently working on is in Taylor. Having been born and raised here in Lampasses, I manage a company branch office at our current location here that our company opened up almost four years ago, so that my wife and I could be closer to family. I just wanted to let the public know that we are not involved in the project, and that anyone can feel free to come by our office if they have any questions or concerns.
Thank you.
Hi, how y'all doing? Thank you for having us. So I don't have any skin in the game, I'm a civilian, and I am a, we have some friends who have their property affected by this. And when I heard about this, it kind of was very disheartening to me, because they've had their property here in Lampasses for many generations, and I know another person who has their property involved in this. And I feel like if we as a community do not step up together and unite, property owner or not, we're gonna, we're not gonna be able to fight this in the way that we need to. I find that it is essential that we bring in all community aspects, including our city council, including our commissioners, and our judge, anything that we can throw at this together as a community will be powerful. These people have a lot of money, they don't care about us, they, they don't even know the maps, there's property lines that have this so-called path that they want to take, and they're just sheer cliffs, and, you know, they probably have aerials, you name it, they've probably blown stuff over your land you don't know about, but they are, these are the big guys. And to us, like, for, we're nothing to them. They don't have any feeling towards us as people, all they care about is their assets, and their Fortune 500 companies, and their gain. And I haven't lived here forever, I've only lived here not even quite three years. And I moved here because I love Lampasses, and I love this community, and I love the rural community. And we have six children, and my dream is to pass our property off to every generation thereafter, and I feel such a heart for the people who have, who are up against this right now. Because that dream that they've had, where they've had that property passed off to them, is now, like, being threatened in a way that they don't know what to do, and there's a lot of emotion behind it. And so, my request for our community is to all come together and figure out a way to stop these people. I don't, I don't have a solution for that, but as soon as I got out of the meeting this morning, I went home, I started working on a logo with my daughter, we've got an email going for it, we've got a logo, I'm gonna grab the website when we get home, like, we need to have all hands on deck, and we need to be organized. And anything that y'all can do to assist us, or brainstorm, anything in a way that we can figure out how we can stop this, because at the end of the day, when you leave Lampasses and you go out to Georgetown, or you're in Austin, or even Marble Falls for that matter, when you come home to Lampasses and you hit that, that light coming into town, you, light? You have, like, you can take a deep breath, and if these people get their hands on Lampasses and we bend a knee, we're gonna not be any different than Georgetown, or Marble Falls for that matter. They will come in, or Liberty Hill for that matter, and they will do the same thing to this town as that they've done to other towns. So I just ask that we all come together and figure out a way to do something, and not just go to bed and say, "Oh, well, you know, we can't do anything, let's, let's do something."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Robbie Van, we own a ranch just outside of town, and the railroad is coming through a portion of my property, about a hundred yards from my house, but, so I'm opposed to it. But I wanted to make y'all aware of something, I contacted Dan Bissou. Dan is, I don't know if y'all have heard of Stewart's, American Stewart's of Liberty, that they're a major property rights group, and he made me aware that, he said there is a state statute, local, and, wait a minute, there is a state statute under Local Government Code 391, are y'all familiar with that? Anyway, that allows two counties or two municipalities to form a planning commission that can demand coordination. Now, she goes on to say that, now this deals with state agencies, but we've gotten federal agencies to come to the table as well, especially if an environmental impact statement is required. So, I think that the city could definitely help, even though the city may not be impacted directly, it can help all of us by, by getting involved and coordinating with the other municipalities and counties to get it done. All we need is a seat at the table, you know, and that'll help us, so, thank you.
Okay, speaking here, I'm David Sandifer, and my wife Linda, she's part of the Snell-Alexander family that has land on Sulphur Creek, and also on, on Sheep Creek, from, some of that's been in the family since 1848. So it's dear to their heart, and, and I'm also impressed by Mr. Hinckley's comment about the community coming together, he's next door to us and, and never met the man, so, they, it really is neat to see what brings the community together, and that's land and all this pristine beauty that we have. Part of the railroad would come through my Aunt Leah's property, and Marion, Uncle Marion's property, and it would come pretty close to an archaeological dig that's, you know, going on, things, things like that, artifacts that you can't, you know, maybe, it's something that the same team that's looking at that is also, was the ones that found the golf site and near Highco, Clifton. So there, things like that are going on, so I really don't think it's gonna pass a lot of muster when it comes down to it, but we want to know that the city council has our back. We had a great meeting this morning with the commissioners, I also spoke with Commissioner Burnet County, and he's, they seem to be on board with it to help us, you know, I mean, they're concerned about the citizens of this area, y'all know you are too, so, we just hope you have our support. And there's a lot of things that, once they do the environmental survey, I think they're gonna find out that it's not a arid climate around here, there's a lot of springs, and there's a lot of waterways, and there's, there's a lot of beauty, and cliffs, you know, people don't even know we have caves out there in some parts of that area that are probably inhabited fifteen, who knows how long ago, for thousands of years. So, anyway, thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for having this forum. My name is Keith Shank, I'm a resident in Burnet County, I'm here because we're neighbors, and we all need to be concerned. Two or three of my neighbors will have their properties dissected by this proposed railway, and as I see it, it's less than a hundred yards from our high fence, 550 acres, which we raise wildlife on, some Newbyan ibex, some, some threatened species, and, and I think the environmental aspect of this is something that we as neighbors, and I say neighbors, our, our county commissioners in Burnet and Lampasses and the city council, to get, singularly, we're not very strong, but as this represents, together, we will be a force to be reckoned with, and that's what needs to happen here. So, I urge you guys to reach out to your counterparts in Burnet and, and, you know, your county commissioners here, because this thing, you know, as I see the proposed, this proposed, I mean, our ranch could be next, divided right with these other people's ranches, and who knows whose property's next down the line as this thing progresses, so, we have to fight, I think we gotta fight hard, and as neighbors, we're here to help you guys, and you guys are here to help us, but I just wanted to come up and voice my, my opinion that this is important for, we've got three generations that come to our ranch, and, and, you know, we want to keep that going for the next three generations, so, thank you for this, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? I pre, oh, here we go.
I'm Mike Gallagher, I'm also resident of Burnet County. I'm not directly impacted, so far as I know, because that map is messed up. But I don't think people have to be directly impacted to understand that these people are trying to make money, we're trying to protect a way of life. The wildlife on my property has diminished already because of pipelines, because of construction, and all it's gonna do is get worse. These, this, they just want to make money, we just trying to live our dream. So we hope we get all the help we need. Thank you.
Appreciate all the comments, any, I don't want to miss anybody tonight, anybody else have anything?
I just have a question or two, but for Commissioner Rainwater.
Commissioner Rainwater, can you come to the microphone, please?
Have y'all already discussed this with the commissioners over in Burnet, and they already had a forum or anything, I didn't know if y'all already?
We did, we've had a commissioner's court meeting this morning, Commissioner Barley was there, I've been in very close contact with him last week, week and a half. We have some meetings set up, I think they're important meetings, one of them was an attorney to discuss eminent domain, that'll be Wednesday. Probably gonna have a meeting next Tuesday with a representative from Texas Materials. We're just trying to get a feel for what's going on, we really, we really don't know, we're just like everybody else, I'm here learning. We're gonna do everything we can to fight this and stretch it out. Talked to a man this morning, he's the manager of the surface, gosh, I'll have to see what it is. Azog, what is it?
Transplantation board.
Transplantation board, yes. Anyway, he assured me that this is in the very beginning stages. He says that they haven't filed for any kind of to put this railroad through at this time. This study that they're doing will take a year to two years. They reached out, I'm sure y'all got some letters last week, I did too, and what they're looking for is elected officials, they're trying to get some action. How many, you know, some of the examples, how many school buses will this affect when they cross 190 out here east of town? There's gonna be about twenty-six, twenty-seven school buses. I think that's big, you know, they don't want any school buses going across railroad tracks. There was a terrible thing that he discussed, and like I said, I'm gonna continue to be in contact with him, and some of the things that he asked us about, you know, medical services and different things, we're gonna try to, try to get everybody to good, or get everybody on board, and, and, you know, send him some information regarding this. He said after about a thirty-day period, he'll be contacting the citizens, more of a forum type, and getting information from them, so, anyway, we're just, we're all learning with everybody right now, but we are, we're gonna work with Burnet County very closely. Like I said, I've talked to Damon about three times a day. I think we have some very important meetings coming up, and we'll pass it on as soon as we get some information from him.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Rainwater? Mr. Rainwater? I'm, okay, huh?
This one I hear.
Yes, I was just wondering, what, what can the city do to help the county in this?
At this point, I really, we, we need some support, numbers talk. At this point, I don't see it really affecting the actual inside of the city limits of the city at this point. Now, like Mr. Hinckley said, eventually it will, if this goes through, so, right now, I think we need to, like I said, we need to get some action. I think this eminent domain thing is real big. We have contacted an attorney through Lampasses County, we have not received an actor, I think it's very complicated nowadays. I think our, from what I understand, our previous governor, Rick Perry, kind of made it easier for people to file the domain than it used to be, so there's some gray areas, and I think we're in that gray area. Some of the railroad infrastructure, they're, they're saying like Texas Materials doesn't have that power, but if they join with Burlington Northern or any railroad.
Like the Georgetown company?
Yes, they do have that power, so, to file in the domain, so, anyway, and that's just, like I said, that's just information that I've received the last few days, so, anyway. It, it's early stages, and, and I wish I knew more, and I wish I could tell y'all more, but I really don't have it deep enough for you right now.
Well, just please keep us posted, so, because we're, you know, we wanna, I would like to help.
Well, I seen a post on their social media post about the engineering company, I actually went and talked to him today, and he assured me that, and I told him, you know, we, we need to be informed of what you're doing, and he did, he came up here and spoke, super nicely, had nothing to do with it though.
That's cool.
Anyway, thank y'all.
Thank you. Appreciate all the citizens' comments this afternoon, I tell you, it tells me one thing is, don't mess with Lampasses. On that. A t-shirt, don't mess with Lampasses. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna move to item number, we're gonna jump up to item number two, discussion regarding HVAC unit at the Calvert Municipal Building.
Nobody's interested in Calvert. They don't want to hear my woes. It feels great in here.
It feels great in here.
If you guys could kinda keep, keep quiet, we need to let Ms. Sims go on to her HVAC so we can get an air conditioner in here or talk about getting an air conditioner in here.
Good evening, Marion Council. So at the last meeting, we briefly discussed.
Order, order, order. Order, order. Okay.
So at the last council meeting, we briefly went over the Calvert HVAC unit and the despair and how to get it repaired or replaced and what challenges we were facing. So a few of those items was the ITM, which is the intelligent manager, which is the brains of the software that need to be repaired, which is gonna run about nine thousand dollars for the actual software and for the labor. We discussed the possible refrigerant leak in the bottom that'll cost about nine thousand dollars for them to come out and investigate and repair. And then we did talk about our warranty with regarding to ten years for the unit versus the only having the one year for the software itself. And then, of course, the freon issue with the fact that the software changes and the unit complexity on its own. But we're also facing some changes to freon in 2025. So currently, the freon that we're using will no longer be able to use eventually when it comes to the end of 2025. They're changing everything over. So we talked about our options of either repairing or replacing. And Councilmember Hyder had mentioned putting some money towards a new unit versus repairing what we have existing. So without knowing that would have to be a competitive bid, I did not want anyone provided or just to provide us some itemized information. But we're looking at something probably under a hundred thousand dollars that we can do a new unit for the top and the bottom. I don't know all the lingos. That's why I asked that Mr. Stokes come to address any questions y'all might have specifically regarding the unit that he can help me with. Again, but I've just used him as a consult because he has utilized and helped us with a lot of our buildings. So I've used him as my resource. So do you have any questions about what we talked about or how do you want to proceed with moving forward?
You said his best guess estimate. Again, if we put it out for bid, all of the legality deserves about a hundred thousand, best guess?
Under a hundred thousand is what we think we can replace what we currently have.
Okay, and that, and that's going with a new refrigerant and being up to spec and being up to code and all that stuff?
Yes, it will be.
Okay.
These units that you see on the ceiling right now, these have not been changed over to the new freon. That will be around October before these units are. These, these are a Dyken unit. The Dyken, most of Dyken equipment is already in the process of being changed over. I installed Dyken and, and we've been changed over for some of the many split type items and equipment for about eight, six, eight months now. And so it's changing very rapidly. It is the freon that you do need to rec, need to consider because it is a one-part freon. The issue with the freon that you have now is it's a four-ten A, R four-ten A freon. It's a two-part freon. So when you have a leak, you don't know what part of the two-part is missing. So that's why they want to pull a hundred pounds of freon out of this building and put back the whole hundred pounds of freon because it has to be weighed in. It has to be that precise. And so when you're going with an R thirty-two freon or a, a different freon, that's a one-part freon, then you could just top one off. If you did have a freon, like repair the leak, you're now not out a hundred pounds of freon, which has gotten really expensive. So the main problem with this building is that the, the controls for the building, when the controls go down, all the equipment goes down. There's not any independent one-on-one systems. The, the offices over here are on a different unit. It's still in that network and we're able to keep that one going, but this whole building on this side is down. And so that was probably a move by the engineers that set it up. And they thought they were doing something that could be efficient and controlled from another location so you can, you can oversee it. But now technology has, has passed that upward. That's not quite necessary. Each one of these thermostats and each one of these rooms could have oversight over it. And so without it being networked together with all or none. And so what I would recommend in the future is having zoning issues, having zoning areas, but not connected together so that you, all your eggs aren't in one basket.
Does that include the basement? Cause I know that there's some future talks about.
It does not. There's not anything in the basement right now. It is set up for that. But if you're going with a system that's independent of each other, the offices should be independent of this building. Then later on, you do have the electrical consumption that you can, you can move forward and take that project on at a later date and it would be fine. If you had, if you tried to install the, the basement now into the system that we have now, then it would, you would just be adding more eggs to that same basket, which it just really puts you in, there's not anybody, the, the technology, whoever installs the technology basically has control of it.
So this, this current system is pretty much just overkill for this building and.
That is correct.
Fancy expensive toy that now doesn't work.
And there's not a way to take that down. The stage, they should have come down one stage minimum, possibly two. If they would have done the one stage down, you would have had some independent areas that were zoned independently and that would work fine.
It's pretty much a scrap it, start over.
Yes, sir.
Becky, is this ninety-four hundred dollar quote for finding a leak, is that from the company that?
Installed it.
That installed it?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Stokes, I'm not gonna put you on the spot, but I'm willing to ask the question. Does that seem out of line to find a leak?
When they have the technology that runs everything, they can pretty much.
Find it?
They can charge what they want because you don't have.
Is it, is it something that we could outsource the leak, find it and get it fixed?
Cannot.
No.
You've got to pull the whole hundred pounds of freon. That's what they're saying that is weighed into this unit right now. You pull that hundred pounds out and weigh it back in after you find the freon leak. So that's, if you had the independent systems on zones, then you would only be working on that zone. Then you're talking about five to ten pounds of freon, four freon leak in the future.
Okay. These systems in the scene, and you said that right now they're not on the new, or they're being switched out. I think it's a Dyken.
Still changing to the new.
Would these have to be switched out too, or they can just be changed over to the new refrigerant?
They're, with the new freon, nothing is, will interact. So you have to start fresh and that is pushed by the government.
Becky, are we concerned that we, should we consider adding the basement? I'm assuming you're not talking about the ground floor. There's another basement level that doesn't have it. Do we need to consider having that?
At a later date, that equipment's gonna be available. R thirty-two is gonna be available for the next fifteen, twenty years. And so if you decide to add on or change something at that time, you'll be able to change to the R thirty-two. So the problem is, is just this head. The rest of the equipment that's in the offices and the downstairs and the floor below, that equipment has already been changed over. But it is in that system that it communicates altogether. And that's the problem.
And something to think about with the basement is right now it's not finished out. So once you decide what we want to use for, then that could be something we do at that time.
Yeah, my mind says if we did it now, it'd be cheaper. Cause everything's worked since tomorrow. Just has parts and labor and supply. So I know it's budget time coming up in three or four months, so we may consider, just think about it. What I'm hearing, options wise, are replace it completely or patch it. Am I wrong in that assessment?
That is correct. Most of the time, you want to get ten to fifteen years out of the system. I do believe that this system, you could get that. The problem is, is the only people that can work on it are around Rock and Waco. And they travel. It's a day fee. We're gonna travel here. And then during the refrigerant maintenance, we change the filters, we clean the units, but we don't get into the controls of it at all. My company actually does that. I've been in Lampasses thirty-two years, electrical and air conditioning in this area. So I'm familiar with all the buildings. I did oversee a little bit of this when it first started and the mayor came to me to talk to me about it. But they just took the technology to the highest level possible, which really wasn't what we were needing.
It gives something to me to spend twenty-five percent of a complete redo and then have to redo it again pretty soon in the future. I guess my concern is timeframe wise, if we look at.
I do.
I don't want to be in here in August. Show me I get real lucky if I get here lucky. I don't want to be in here in August.
This equipment won't be available till October or after. And so you can see how far this unit sets down. It's a different style unit. It's not a residential unit. It's a commercial unit. And so in my opinion, I would pay the fee now. See if you can get an extended warranty of some sort out of it. We have three years left on the warranty of the equipment right now. I don't like that it's a one-year warranty on the labor and on the technology of, of the controls. But I would imagine, and this is just my opinion as well. We do have lightning surges and, and surge, electrical surges. If we do some protection to protect that equipment a little better, I think that may extend the life of that equipment. And so it's very fragile and it's, it's looking for a surge. It's looking for a lightning storm and it can cause those issues very easily. And so in my opinion, I do think you need to pay the fee now. Have it fixed for now. See how close we can get to the ten to fifteen year. Because of the equipment that is here is super, super expensive. It's a hundred thousand dollars to replace it. We could, if and when this needs to be replaced twelve years, fifteen years from now, I think at that time, we could simplify it a little bit and save the money at the end then. But try to get the money out of, it's like driving a car just a little bit longer. If for the, you know, that, those repairs on those cars are very expensive, same thing.
How, how old is this system here?
Seven years old.
Seven years old.
So it's got, it's got a ten year.
About fifteen years?
Ten to fifteen. They're saying fifteen and that should be the norm. Commercial equipment might not last quite as long. Residential is usually around fifteen years.
Do you know, sir, if, if, if we go that option and repair the system, that is there any way that we could reprogram these controllers to have the independent systems, independent areas, like you said, no, it's all in one?
Yes, sir. I had, I had, I had a couple of Dyken wrecks come out. We went, walked the building. We went through it to see what could be done, if that could be done as well. So at least we could separate the offices from this building, the top floor from the second, you know, downstairs. And it's, it's all one. And so, but when you go forward and you do decide to start to change that equipment out, yes, then it would be. And it could be oversight from just the thermostat now with Wi-Fi controls.
And you're saying that anybody with your ability, your company's ability, whether it be whomever, probably couldn't get anything done in terms of a system remove and replace until October? What you're saying?
On just these units with the ceiling cassettes. This, these three ceilings, there's six of them up here upstairs. These ceiling cassettes will not be changed over to the new freon till October. And so I don't recommend going with an old freon that's fixing to be outdated. It's fixing to be obsolete.
Can we hardwire these three systems just for this room?
No, sir.
Can you hardwire it? Can't bypass it?
It's because it's on a loop system. It's, this, this system is operating more like a chiller system. And the size of the units outside are very large and it keeps a loop going. And then as the unit needs it, it can get it. And so that's why you can't just, if we had individual copper lines going from point A to point B, then you could have that unit operate independently. But that's not the way this one is set up at all.
So kind of what, what I'm hearing, and you can kind of correct me if I'm wrong, I might have, might have heard it and didn't hear it at the same time. So we're, to repair the system here to get cooling in here for this summer.
It's a priority.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, we won't be sitting in here in a hundred and ten degrees. We're looking at about twenty-five grand. Is that right?
That's what they're saying, yes.
Okay.
I think that would be money spent. Well, if we could get any kind of extended warranty on the software, one year labor, one year software is, is not good enough for that price.
And that's with possibility, and I say use the word possibility loosely, for another seven years.
Yes, sir. And then you would be getting your money's worth. It is a very high-fishing system every one of them in this application.
And we don't have to wait till October before you do that.
That's right.
I just want to make sure.
That could happen within a few weeks.
Okay. Yeah, in terms of the budget, I mean, Aaron Vaughn, do they have it in the budget? I mean, I know we don't have it in the budget because we didn't think it was gonna break, but.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes.
Right. So we would, we would have to look at the budget and see where we can come up with those funds. It's not easy and certainly not ideal with some other things that we like to take care of. And there is money in the twenty-two C O issue that could certainly be pulled. We just have to recognize that that cuts into funds that were allocated for the basement renovations. It's the easiest place to find money, but we can certainly go to the budget and see if we can pull that one somewhere else.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Becky. All right. Next up on the agenda is discussion regarding economic development directives for Pacific to downtown revitalization, business retention and becoming Texas Main Street community. We need some shirts on there that says, "Don't Mess With Lampasses."
Exactly. Working. So we, so Mr. Bill and I have been talking with the Economic Development Corporation in reference to incentives and directives and things we want to do in market downtown. So one of the things that we started doing was we've gotten ourselves reestablished with the Texas Downtown Association and we've started to work on maybe some facade and some incentives that we can work on downtown for revitalization, beautification. We want to ultimately our role to become a Texas Main Street community again, like we were back in the eighties. I believe was the last time we were. And so we kind of were working towards those efforts and kind of take the focus off the business part for a while and start working towards downtown in our key corridors and start these efforts down in that area. So one of the things is business retention with some incentives that we've come up with and trying to improve signage or facade or interior renovations or exterior renovations, things that we can do to help downtown and keep corridors, areas in, in the general area. So when we brought this up to our E C board, they wanted to see this directive from y'all as well. So we, we had buy-in before we go and present an actual proposal. And so we wanted to kind of get what your ideas were, where you want us to focus our energy on going forward, because that's kind of what we want to do is start focusing on more.
Getting back to being a Texas Main Street community would be awesome. I love it. Business owners getting some, getting a little bit of money for facades or renovations inside. I don't think there's anything wrong at all with that. This is kind of like a, for lack of a better word, chamber commerce. This Main Street organization is, has a big publication, right, where people are traveling through Texas and they run into this Main Street organization. They can see what towns have signed up and are kind of, you know, looking to do this. Any reason of why we were in it and then we're not?
I think just at the time, directives had changed and initiatives they were working on. They had other community organizations that were kind of taking the emphasis away from the city and kind of doing it on their own accord. And I don't know what the E C directives were at that time or even the city directives at that time. But we've been back and forth throughout a few years and we've had several downtown organizations as well and different, you know, people that have worked in that area.
Are these, are these three different initiatives or three different groups? Any of your flyers?
So the flyer, this one right here is the Texas First Street Initiative. This is what we have to do to become the Main Street community. This is the first step. And then we have to identify a Main Street manager that's gonna oversee that process and that project. And then the other one that I put in here was the Texas Downtown Association, which kind of shows you all the different resources that are available by being part of that membership. And the resources that'll be available to help us work on different initiatives for our downtown.
I know we have a business owner, also an attorney, but also not gonna be on the city council anymore. He could probably be the director maybe.
He's already passed that torch.
I'd be cool with spending some money on my building.
Becky, I've, I've looked through a lot of this information. It all looks very well. Can, is there any, I guess, my question is like, do we have any examples of things that they've done for other communities that monetarily as far as downtown Main Street initiatives? Like how much money are they going to spend? Like what, what are the grants? How do those work?
You mean for the associations or for?
Yeah, like for the association that, that, I mean, they have a lot of good information, but it appears to me there's a lot of meetings on top of meetings.
Yeah, like for the association that, that, I mean, they have a lot of good information, but it appears to me there's a lot of meetings on top of meetings. But I don't see, I don't see a lot of action, is what I'm asking.
Well, you have to be admitted. Right. And.
Yeah.
But as far as the action that's been taken by other communities, I can definitely get you a list of things that have been improved in areas. But this is just the beginning, this actually is a commitment from the city to be a part of seminars, training, educational opportunities, networking, seeing what works for other communities versus what works for us. When we become a Main Street community, it will open us up to be able to offer or to apply for grants for our community as a whole. So like if we want to improve lighting or improve sidewalks downtown, being part of the Main Street helps us have like a, a better point system, if you will. Go towards those grants.
I guess the other thing from here, maybe, so one thing that we can discuss is, maybe after like ten thousand dollars matching for like facades on buildings and some incentives, I don't know, with a dollar amount for, for inside, even a rent allocation, I think, for.
Right.
So we're with the incentive program, so that I can do some previous community, um, ten thousand dollar matching grants for facade improvements and ten thousand for, um, building improvements for interior renovations. Um, twenty-five hundred for sign, uh, grant assistance program and, and they recently introduced a permit assistance program. The reason that, for that ten thousand dollar amount is that's the trigger amount for type B E Cs to not have to come to council for subsequent, subsequent approval. So council would initially approve the program for E D C to administer and even set the budget constraints for that each year. So whether we're allocating sixty thousand dollars annually for that or a hundred thousand, you give that first initial blessing each year for the amount to be administered out of that fund. And then it won't require the two readings of a resolution each time an applicant, um, applies for any of those incentives. And it does require sending from the business owner or the building owner. So they would have, for example, for a facade improvement grant, if they put twenty thousand or twenty-five thousand, whatever that number is, they can then come to the E D C and apply, ideally they would apply before they start, so they know if they get the assistance. But, um, then they would submit, uh, receipts for work actually done. We would prove up that they got the applicable permits and all of that. And then we would reimburse them up to ten thousand dollars for their expenditures, the, um, investments that they made into that property. But it's matching, so if they only put five thousand in, we only match twenty-five hundred. But it makes sure that the business or building owners have skin in the game as well.
And for the rent assistance, that's a, like a stair step, so that's kind of like a help getting directions, like when they start off a new business, they might be seventy-nine percent for a few months and then drop it down to fifty and drop it down to twenty-five, where they're not, it's not a correct, it's just a help, it's giving them started.
I guess my question was really more around, like, as far as getting it going, there's a, there's a lot of, is there, is there? I don't know, it seems like there's a lot of stuff, like, we gotta do a whole bunch of loops before we get going and, you know, and this won't benefit me. I'm redoing my building right now, this will not benefit me at all.
But it could in the future.
Before I get this done, um.
So, so the Main Street does have a lot of hoops to jump through. The incentive program, the grants, that's a completely separate animal and it does, it just takes E D C board blessing and council blessing.
Okay.
So the Main Street program is pretty intensive to get started. Um, you have to do this First Street Initiative for the first year. And you have to dedicate a full-time employee to main, doesn't mean they can't have shared duties and do anything, but you have to have a dedicated Main Street employee for two years when you undertake the program. So that's, uh, that does have a few more hoops than just getting this incentive program going, which is a completely separate animal.
And then, and the training and the seminars is more to give us the tools and resources we need to be successful. It's not like a burden, it's not something they're adding to our plate to make us creep ourselves, it's that these are the resources that are available to help us succeed.
Besides the.
E D C to start focusing on business retention again.
Mm-hmm.
Besides the F T E, um, what other costs are associated with this to, to the city business program?
There, other than the membership, I think for the T D A that I applied for, it was two fifty a year, it was just an annual membership that I paid for. Now, if I go to a seminar, if I go to a class, if somebody else does, then yes, of course, those will be expenses, but they'll come out of our training budget that we already have established each year for our budget.
Y'all have a plan on what employee's going to take on this task?
I think we're going to wait on that and give that a proper proposal of what we have in mind. But, um, with having three people right now with my, I'm going to show the side that we will support that endeavor for the planning.
All, all that being said, um, staff might give us, uh, kind of some feedback on the economic development director. Uh, whether that's a good thing or it's not a good thing, Mr. Corbell. Uh, your, kind of your opinion on that?
I do, I personally do not see the need to hire an economic development director right now. I do hold the executive director title and I feel confident in my ability to continue to fill that role and to help meet, um, the needs for any requests that are coming in. I do have certain staff in place that I think can help process any economic development requests. I've been receiving phone calls, um, I'm working deals the way a, a director would. So I think if council is comfortable with that and E D C board is comfortable with that as well, I would be happy to. Especially now that I've got a new staff member coming on that frees up a little bit of time for me. I think I can satisfy that E D C role, um, without needing to hire an additional full-time employee to fill that. Again, if council and the E D C board are comfortable with that at this time. And as community changes and grows, um, you know, obviously we can revisit that. But I feel confident in my ability to do that at this point.
Yeah, we just need, we just need your agreement that if you get overwhelmed, and if deals start rolling in or whatever the deal is or other aspects of your, your position, uh, takes you away, and just you know that you can't really give it the attention it deserves, then you know you got to go to us.
Absolutely.
What do y'all think?
I agree with her.
Agree with her.
I agree.
Is that enough direction?
I think it is.
And you got a whole room full of great citizens here, and I guarantee you they got your back.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Alrighty, that's going to conclude our workshop, and I think we'll take about a ten-minute break. If you guys are good with that, if you guys are good with that? Ten, ten-minute break, we'll be back in at, uh, oh, what is that, about twenty-two minutes till six? Oh, twenty-two minutes till seven. Six thirty-seven, no. We'll be back, six thirty-seven. All right, we'll call our regressation order, Chief Cummins.
That is great. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you. We appreciate you letting us be in such a great community. We thank you for all of our good folks who are here tonight. We thank you for all the information and opinions. We ask that you be with our elected officials, that some good decisions could be made for the benefit of your entire community. We ask that you forgive us of our sins. Until we can meet again, watch over us in safety. As always, Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Go, Becky, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right, we've got a couple of great proclamations tonight. Um, want to, uh, honor Bessie White for ten years of service with the City of Lampasses. Is, is Bessie here by chance?
No, she's not here.
Doggone her. How about Pam Torres? Pam? Nope, she's not here either. Okay. You'll give these to her tomorrow? And this evening, we have a very, very special presentation to recognize some outstanding young leaders in our community. The Kindness Club, the Kids Club. It's a group of young students at Klein-Weiters Elementary who exemplify compassion, humanity, through their acts of kindness under the direction and leadership of Ms. Tammy Burks. Throughout this year, they have been busy making a difference in the community by participating in the following activities. Raise awareness for childhood cancer. Collected money for the Peyton Jones Scholarship. Planted a memorial feces tree in honor of the late Toby King to sit outside the nurse office at Hannah Springs Elementary. Honor those K W E family members who have survived and fought breast cancer by placing their names on pink ribbons and hanging them on Breast Cancer Awareness Tree in the front lobby area. Shared a recording of the book's tattoo on my heart. For all K W E classes decorated and hung banners to share their ideals about kindness with their classmates. Collected donations for Love Covers All for the Elderly and Lampasses. Held a few canned dry food during the month of November for the Catholic Church Food Pantry. Welcome new students to the K W E with a smile and welcome to K W E council. Provided veterans with the K W E challenge coin at the Veterans Day celebration. Created a poster of encouragement to cheer on the students during testing. The students hang the American and Texas flag every morning and take them down every afternoon. Support and show appreciation to the school resource officer, Risa, with a basket of goodies, Betty likes that. At this time, we would like to recognize this outstanding group led by Ms. Tammy Burks. Grayson Felton, Weston Green, Jase Matnick, Carolyn Jones, Sally Walsh, Cora Eckerman, Taylor Creek, Parker Bushen, Thea DeClerc, Gunnar Munoz, Brandon Miller, Hudson Howard, and Roy Stort Stewart. The City of Lampasses is proud to recognize Klein-Weiters Elementary Kindness Club at the twenty-twenty-five Scent Tech Sustainable Community Partnership at Bachelor and Community Champions for March twenty-twenty-five. At this time, if the student's along, you guys are already here, I don't have to read that.
No, that's not appropriate.
Can I get this everybody?
Can we do this, Howard?
Yes, do this one, yes.
Does everybody?
No.
Are you sure? Do all three ones, okay.
One, Miss Bell, one, Miss Chalk, and two.
Come on down.
Yes.
I mean, hold it. You hold it off? Maybe that's free.
Hold it off.
Of course, this all was.
Oh, what? Oh, that's, done in seconds. Ready? Ready?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, let's, uh, let's keep, let's keep rolling here on, uh, public hearings, hearing citizen comments, one point one. Uh, any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter not included on the agenda may do so at this time, the city council may not deliberate on items presented up underneath the agenda. I've got, uh, a paper here, and I think some of them might've spoke during workshop. Um, Mickey Edwards, I think he's gone. Bill Hinckley?
He's gone.
Gone, Stephanie's gone, and the great, uh, Joe Abel, he could come.
Thank y'all for having me. I might take more than three minutes, is that all right? Not much.
Don't, 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 don't go over much, I'd hate to have to shut you down.
Uh, a few year, well, a year ago, a group of interested people in our community got to, together to discuss how to promote our little town. These meetings were open to anyone to come and bring ideas about Lampasses. Manually talked about ways to improve different aspects of our town. Whether it be certain improvement, ways to promote Lampasses, beautification projects, obtaining grants for those improvements, or providing short-term financing for people to establish or improve their business. We also covered endorsing existing projects that people have been doing in the community. So we are now a registered five oh one C three organization, registered with the state, and we call ourselves Forward Lampasses. Since this is a nonprofit, we had to have a way to accept donations, uh, so we could help finance some of our projects and provide a tax write-off for some, uh, people that were willing to give us money. Uh, right now, on our plate, we have three main projects. Uh, first one is to clean up and beautify Sulfur Creek. Uh, we're, we've started on the Arundo. Uh, we've got to call ourselves, uh, the Old Fart Cane Cutter Club. But we've got a, I thought I injected humor. So, we. We cut the Arundo, burned it, and have now, uh, sprayed it with herbicide. So you, y'all see a difference already on.
So you all see a difference already on that. But what we're trying to do is clean the creek up from Western Street to Fourth Street on both sides, take out all invasive species. The arundo, we have lots of china berries, as y'all, as y'all know, Chinese tallow, and various other plants that have escaped and are now on the creek. We're also, well, we're going to turn it into hike and bike trail. And so, if we get it cleaned up next spring.
Keep, keep going.
I mean, yeah, next, I've taken my time handling it. Next fall, we'll probably do some planting and stuff. And then our second project, Chris Harrison, is handling, and it's improving the rodeo arena. He's trying to get more bleachers, lighting, and doing general ground improvements. And we're trying to get the airport project finalized so we can apply for grant money to get weather section and provide, to provide fuel. And if that happens, then we have individuals that want to put in hangers at the airport. And we're getting cooperation from the city, and we appreciate that. There are all kinds of improvements we can make to our city, and I hope these initial projects will just be a beginning of many more projects to come. And this Friday at noon, Don Buzell is gonna have to talk to us about water at First Texas Bank upstairs, and everybody's invited. And I want to comment on the railroad. I've got two, two and a quarter miles of rideaway that go across me. I own a mile and a half of it. But what I think is happening is they're going to build Interstate 14, and they've already got the materials lined up nearby. And Georgetown Railroad sold the rightofway to Texas Materials. So Texas Materials should get it approved because they're an international company. And then they'll get the eminent domain, and then Georgetown Railroad will haul the materials for them. That's my take on that. Thank you.
Now, can anybody come to these meetings?
Yes.
Yeah. Invite her.
Yeah, whenever we go into session, and we try to be open, and, but yeah. It ought to be interesting because he's going to be talking about formations we can drill wells in for the city to supplement our water.
Thank you for.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Next up, Ms. Alexa Thompson.
It gets hotter when you go up there. This is just on the agenda. I just wanted to make a comment for the seven point four on the public, Dolly Parton's Imagination Library with the Public Library. My kids have been both been a part of it. I think it also, we incorporated the program when my daughter was three months old, and she's four, and my son will be two in Friday, actually. And so my kids have been getting it since the program started here. And all I ask is y'all still stay supportive of it because it's phenomenal. My kids love receiving their own basic mail, which is a book. And it ranges from the Little Blue Truck all the way to, you know, Princess Books Trucks. It's just really good for our community. So I just wanted to, as an avid user for my kids, wanted just to make that point that it's a good thing that we have in this town because, like I said, my kids loved. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. One point two, citizens comment. Any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter that is included on the agenda. That was Alexa. I do so at this time. Anyone else? Public hearing to receive citizens' comments to amend the appendix A fee schedule, Chapter 62, Solid Waste, Article 3, building rates and fees related to the collection of solid waste.
Good evening, Mayor Council. This item is just the last part of us actually adhering to the contract that's established with Frontier. And you may remember back in July, 2024, we established and selected the firm, which is Frontier Waste Solutions. In December, we had to give the contract, and we've been working with them for several months on mobilization. And they'll be here starting in April, bringing in the new dumpsters to start rotating them out. So they'll be effective and ready to go on May first. So this is just the fee schedule that will ship the new rates. It will be effective in May, May first. So this is just a public hearing for any citizen comments regarding the new rate structure. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Alexa.
Thank you.
Public hearings to receive citizens' comment regarding increase in golf fees at Hancock Park Golf Course specific to green fees, membership fees, trail fees, golf cart fees, shed rounds fees.
Mayor and Council, Chris and I had a conversation here about a month ago, I guess, but he's really seeing some increased traffic from the Austin area. Our rates at the course are really pretty low for the area, and maybe some comments to that. People are finding it less expensive to purchase a membership to the golf course and come play twice a month than it is to actually just come up and play. And so he had approached me about the idea of amending the fee schedule to capture some additional revenues from the growth in play that the course has seen out there. So we met with the advisory board, and they have some recommended changes, but I think it's a good time of year to, to make those adjustments as we're going into the pretty heavy season for him out there. And I'll turn it over to him.
Okay, real quick, like she said, we've seen, obviously, a lot of, you get a lot of Austin traffic that's been coming in. And the number one comment that we hear is how cheap it is to come play in Lampasses. So I did do some comparisons to the golf courses in the area. Just real quick, I won't go over every single number, but just to kind of summarize, as far as the day, I'm just going to go on the weekends because that's usually when we're our busiest. We're about $20 less than what Delaware is. I understand we're not at Delaware Springs, so I don't expect to be at that level. But we're also pretty low compared to, say, Coppers Cove, Colleen, and San Saba. We're pretty much right on course with them. So I was trying to figure out a way to separate us from them, maybe meet somewhere in the middle. So I came up with about $8 on a Green Street increase on both your weekday and weekend Greenspeace. One of the things that I would like to see changed that is pretty typical of all golf courses. Currently, right now, our weekday rate runs Monday through Friday. I think it should be Monday through Thursday, and then your weekend rates start on Friday, Saturday, Sunday. That's pretty typical at most courses. That's when we have a lot of our play. So I think we should change that as well. As far as the membership fees, they are a constant, so we're out of, I don't really see going up too much on that. We've probably added, add to what Aaron said, we've added almost 40 memberships since January 1 out there. So when people come in, they do a price comparison and go, okay, I'm paying $49 for a round of golf on the weekend. We're coming over here, you know, three times a month to play. We're better off, they're, they're buying memberships even now, even though the memberships will end June 30. So I was hoping to go up on that. As far as cart fees, cart fees will stay the same. Trail fees, we're going to go up about $10 on those. Or not about $10, go up $10 on that. There may be a little pushback on that, but my hope was that our, our trails are in such bad shape that if we can just say, hey, we recognize that we're going to be looking into maybe its capital improvement, improving the golf, the trails at some point. There's some justification there in that. And then also the the shed rentals, the six-month shed rentals, we have them at, they're currently at 175. I was proposing to go to 200 to raise it $25. We have a lot of them. I mean, we don't, we're pretty limited on what we have. We've got a waitlist of about 40 to get into the cart sheds. A lot of these members are renting from the storage units over by the Thirsty Penguin, and they're paying, they come in, you know, pretty regularly and say they're paying anywhere from 80 to 90 bucks a month for those. So if you figure that in a six-month period, I think it's pretty cheap what we're at. But I think if you were to hit them too much, you know, you're gonna, you could potentially lose some of those members. So I don't want to see that happen, but I think the big, the big push to me is catch your out-of-town player as far as the price increase, but we don't want to, we don't want to price them out and try to get them to Delaware. I'm just saying, meet in the middle.
So you're going to be a little bit lower than Delaware Springs, a little bit higher than Colleen, Cove, and San Saba?
Uh, so sorry, yeah, we'll definitely be above Colleen. I mean, I'm sorry, Coppers Cove and San Saba. Colleen, right now, Colleen is, I'm trying to remember. I want to say they're like 12 bucks higher than us. I think is what it is off the top of my head. So we'll kind of be, we'll be kind of online with those. Yeah, I think so. So can't think of anything else. That's really all I have as far as the increases. I had it all broken down here, and I could email you all the, I've got a spreadsheet set up on everything. It's kind of complicated, but I'll be happy to send it to y'all if I want.
Yeah, the question, what, in regards to the school tour needs per players without their increase, does that, can you talk about that?
Uh, so right now, I'm sorry.
Is that how I'm reading that correctly?
Yeah, so the, so that is a good one. So on the junior, on the junior fees right now, I just added another ten, or five dollars to what we're at. Delaware on there, again, I know I'm comparing Delaware, just giving comparisons. Delaware was at 25 per student that they charge. Colleen was at 20. And Coppers Cove and San Saba will right about where we're at, right around 10. So I was wanting to get to that 15 mark. I think that's more than fair. I mean, that's how we make a little bit of money to get back, because like I said, the school doesn't pay us anything for the kids when they're out there playing. So that's our opportunity to get a little bit back when they have tournaments out there.
What was the last significant price increase? It's been a while, hasn't it? I know you've been here a little over a year.
Yeah, I talked to Van. I think the last one was in, it was either October of '22 or October of '23. So it's been about two, two and a half years, something like that.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Three point one, discussion and possible action regarding the approval of minutes of regular meetings held on March 17, 2025.
I'm going to approve the minutes.
All in favor?
Three point one, discussion and possible action regarding February 2025 investment report. Discussion and possible action regarding the second reading of the ordinance to approve rezoned request, 79.04 acres northern concrete estates commonly known as 1206 Mill Street and 1705 East Fourth Street as follows. Forty-nine single-family residential, six SF6 lots to 118 lots. 119 single-family residential, eight SF8 lots, 65 lots. Seventy-five single-family residential, 10 SF10 lots to 16 lots. Thirty single-family attached townhomes, lots to 68 lots. Twenty point 51 acres to agricultural green space from single-family residential, 10 SF10. Discussion and possible action regarding the second reading of the ordinance to approve request rezoned property from retail R to two-family residential district duplex or property described as lots 1A and 2A. Lot 18 Old Town Edition located at the corner of East First Street and Live Oak, Lampasses, Texas, Lampasses County. Discussion and possible action to approve the second reading of an ordinance for specific use permit to allow for accessory dwelling in an area zone, single-family residential, 10 SF10 described as lot 7A, reflat of lot 7 and 8. Block 3, FJ Harris subdivision, commonly known as 907 West Sixth Street, Lampasses, Texas, Lampasses County. Discussion and possible action regarding the second reading of an ordinance to abandon the 16-foot wide alleyway, North Avenue E between Easterly and Westerly section of Lot 80, commonly known as 703 West Avenue E, Texas, Lampasses County. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
I'd like to separate three point two, and I'm a nay on that.
I'm a nay on three point two also.
Same.
So that really needs to be pulled out. So Mayor, we'll pull out three point two. We'll need a load on three point one, three point three, three point four, and three point five, and then we'll need a separate load on three.
Can I get a motion on those?
Make a motion to approve three point one, three point three, three point four, and three point five, and they consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
And at this time, what we're, what we're going to do is, I'm sorry. We need a motion on three point two.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda, three point two.
Same. I thought, I thought that's what we just voted on.
Yeah, we voted on three one, three three, three four. Yeah, approved, yeah. I'm charging a second.
Yes. We have a motion and a second on three point two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
All right, now we'll move on to seven point eight. Now, we're going to seven point eight. We're moving it up. From the discussion and possible action regarding proposed Lampasses and Barren rail line.
I know we still have a few people here.
Mayor and Council, this was an item requested to be placed on the agenda. If the council feels appropriate to take any action tonight, they can. Otherwise, you can wait for more information to come in.
What, what are the options on action we can take at this point?
If, if the governing body wanted to submit any environmental response to the STV, that's at this point really the only action that the council can take.
So is there any way that we could just voice our support for our other, our neighbors and that we would like to be included in the conversation?
Certainly. You don't have to take any action.
Can we just, the city manager, just stay in the loop there and to, to the sentiment of the council that we would be opposed to that rail line coming through? Is that a good consensus of?
So, so I'll stay up to date on that and bring any reports back to council as it may so long.
Okay, so we have seen no action taken on that. Origin apartment reports. Judge.
Welcome. Mayor and Council. First, I want to talk about some statistics. I know everybody will enjoy hearing these. In 2021, our office processed 1,231 violations. In 2022, 1519 in 2023, 1,748. Last year, we topped 2,000 in 2019. We collected $370,621, of which the city kept $261,258.74. For the last six years, we have used N or VBA to assist us in our collections, and they have assisted us in collecting approximately $600,000. The collection agency is staggering warrant resolution months. It used to be there was a warrant roundup about this time every year when the police would go out and arrest people. And the HMO has shifted to three times a year, March, June, September. And of course, March is when. And of course, March is when hopefully people are getting income tax refunds. And so we put pressure on them this time of year to see if we can get some of that, uh, towards their fines. Uh, first week, uh, they all get a postcard, second, third weeks, text messages. Fourth week, basically start serving warrants and encourage the people to come into the office. We offer amnesty, of course, that's worked really good last year and really good, uh, so far this year. We don't have any jury trials pending and no bench trials pending. So for a jury trial, they usually get worked out. Almost all the community service now involves teenagers, uh, doing mandatory community service as part of their sentence, um, for tobacco, alcohol, and drug paraphernalia generally. Uh, we presume that if you're under a seventeen-year age, uh, occasionally, uh, these kids aren't, and just randomly get fined, but that's pretty rare. The city has provided us with cell phones, and they work a magic in our office. A lot of people are getting text messages and emails, and that's how, uh, the people we deal with, in fact, everybody I know, uh, communicates and pester people in that manner, uh, is proved quite effective. Uh, we do still issue warrants and police do periodically arrest people, but, uh, most of the time, they try to arrest them, they bring office hours, bring them in, and, uh, because there's a finite amount of jail room, and, uh, we need, that room reserved for people that we need protection from, and that's not usually the people we encounter, and so we do our best to work that out with them. Uh, we're kind of a full-service, um, municipal court in that a lot of people we see have driver license problems. And if you ever try to get your license renewed, you're likely, that you know that there are all kinds of problems dealing with driver license people. And furthermore, you know, we have three justice courts in town, meaning the county, three municipal courts in the county, as well as a county and district court. So we do our very best to help these people out, uh, go online for them. Uh, we look at the driver's license information, we help set up appointments for them to talk to driver license people and, uh, help them schedule courses that are required to get their driver's license again. And so, um, if you ever get frustrated, it has to recall, she's an expert. Uh, kind of updates you on, uh, city ordinance issues. Uh, Brandon English has been doing a great job as our code officer. Since he's taken over, he's filed forty-five city ordinance cases. Uh, over half of twenty-four have been withdrawn satisfactorily and been dismissed, uh, usually with a payment of a hundred dollar dismissal fee. We've obtained judgments in five of the cases and abstracted those judgments and recorded those judgments in the county clerk's office, so maybe someday we might get paid. Uh, there are three cases that are on our payment plan. Two cases, we had warrants issues, those people live in Austin. And, you know, the police department's been very helpful in tracking down current addresses for these people. Because the last thing I wanted to say is, I had no idea there was a warrant in my address. And so they have, uh, resources over there that do not, uh, employ ECIC or any of the, uh, protected databases and helping us with, uh, the, uh, the addresses and getting that out. And, uh, we've got eleven cases, uh, in which warrants will be issued on April fifteenth. Now, the big news in municipal courts circles is the implementation of the youth diversion statute, passed in twenty twenty-three, and all courts, uh, municipal and justice are required to be in compliance January this year, and it has some benefits, because until this year, we couldn't order a diversion until they've been convictioned. Now, does anybody remember Jenna Bush? Jenna Bush, W S R. She was in Chuy's one day, uh, the Secret Service officer decided, got busted for drinking alcohol underage. And, uh, she got some community service and her case was dismissed. So up until now, we've kind of had the Jenna Bush rule, and that is, our kids are gonna get treated the same way as she was. And so that's what's gonna happen, but we had to get a conviction first. And here, with this diversion, we can do it on the front end, do the community service and get their case dismissed. And the coolest part is, when they turn eighteen, our office is, is authorized to automatically purge that from the student's record. So that's where, uh, that's what's going on in municipal court. Anybody have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor and Council, I'd like to take a moment and introduce John McElroy. And he's going to be joining us on April first from the City of Liberty Hill. John, did you want to come up and, as a reminder, I may probably work today.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
I just want to tell them a little bit.
Yeah, uh, my name's John McElroy, met a few of you before the, the meeting began, um. I have been in this, uh, utility industry for over twenty-three years. I've worked in for the City of Georgetown as the, uh, Water Operations Manager for about twenty-two years. I've spent the last little over a year and a half at the City of Liberty Hill, where I was the water, water plant officer out there, so, um, very excited to be here. Um, from what I've heard, it sounds like an awesome community, everybody very, very much, very impressed with that, so, uh, I have been married for twenty-six years, have four children and nine grandchildren. And I am a beekeeper as a hobby, so that's what I do in my spare time, and I worked on all week and long. It is bee season right now, so, uh, first of all, I guess, thanks just for having me, I'm glad to be aboard and grateful, thank you.
Thank you for coming on.
Uh, in front of you, you have a list of ongoing projects, I won't, uh, the water department has been particularly busy, so I won't run through each of those, but that, um, shows you what, projects they've completed to date, and in progress is entry point, perimeter project and solid tangling projects. As I mentioned last week, the second street repayment was, uh, completed, they did a walkthrough on Thursday, and all looked good on that project, and.
Why, I brought the curves right by first, makes it so far out of the road.
I, I'm not sure if it's just that, I, I can find out for sure.
The rest of them are normal, and then you've got them great big bubbles right there.
Okay, I'll, I'll find out for sure and, and report back to you on that. And out at the airport, the fuel tank replacement is in progress, uh, estimated completion the first week of April. Uh, AWAS bid is in your pocket for consideration tonight, so we will be getting moving forward on that. The sports are scheduled to begin soon, and, um, we are hiring for the pool season, currently looking for a pool manager. We have been in talks with the YMCA to handle staffing for the swimming pool, um, this season and possibly maintaining the facilities next year if we get the proper agreements in place. And they would handle a lot of staffing for that, so just kind of an idea of what we've got going on there, because we have had struggles, and we have the same thing in Brady, just struggles keeping the swimming pools staff throughout the summer. And so we're just looking into some options for that. On wayfinding, the signs are scheduled to be delivered by the end of April. Southwest ornament signs will be on site April twenty-one to begin setting subs, um, and setting the signs in the first few weeks of May. As far solid waste goes, dumpster replacement will begin April one, and they'll be monitoring the current solid waste trucks to get the routes down around the same time. At their meeting last week, the Economic Development Board received the appraisal for eighty-seven acres at the garden of the business park. The appraisal for the property was noted at two point six three million dollars, which equates to about thirty thousand an acre. Uh, highest and best use was recognized as single-family residential. And as we discussed during workshop, we discussed the incentive grants, Main Street, um, and those types of issues, so just to keep you updated with what's going on with EDC. And the staff is looking for some volunteers from council to comprise the Audit Review Committee, and, and Vonn can maybe speak to that more, I think she's got a meeting set up for March twenty-seventh at ten AM, if anyone would be available. Obviously, we don't need a call with council, um, if there's any volunteers to sit in on that. Audits are really riveting. Come on, guys. Think about it and let us know if anyone can be here.
We have to have it out by the twenty-eighth, so I have to remember how long.
How long was, I, I've said it once before, how long has it been?
It takes thirty to, thirty minutes an hour, it won't go over an hour.
That's like the bill of checking, sure, I'll let you go before.
Um, I did reach out to text last week for an update on two eighty-one. They report that contractors will be, begin the installation of the Gabyan wall, I believe I'm pronouncing that correctly. If not, I'm not in, in, uh, Richardson wall building, so I could be wrong on that. Um, that will be installed in a portion of the construction, they were to start on that today. It's very weather-dependent work, so depending on how the next few months go, they hope to have traffic switched in May at the earliest or June at the latest.
I'm far behind, or?
Well, they were supposed to tr- switch traffic in December, so at least five to six months. Does anyone have any other questions?
Just to be clear, it's not us.
Corrected, it's opposite of Lampasses.
All right, we'll switch down to seven point one. Discussion and possible action regarding the approval of funding to repair the active HVAC unit at the Jack Calvert Municipal Building, the one we're sitting in now, that looks hot.
There, exactly.
There you go.
To consider a motion to engage services from VRF to diagnose and repair the HVAC unit at the Jack Calvert Municipal Building in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. It's hot in here, remember?
I make a motion to engage services from VRF to diagnose and repair the HVAC unit at the Jack Calvert Municipal Building in the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Second. Any discussion?
You know, there's no saying that, um, uh, sacrifice today and benefit tomorrow, but I don't think that applies here. We need to go ahead and prove this fact.
The only thing that was commented to us is that we want to ask for a three-year warranty versus.
More than a one, because right now, the software is only a year, so we're gonna try to push that to two if we can, and see about what we can do for labor.
So as long as, as long as that's part of the deal, good.
I mean, it may not be approved.
I know, but.
Okay, so I'll ask, yes, I just want to make sure, I don't want to stop the process, it's, okay, okay.
I think it's something that we want to do.
Absolutely.
Try and amend my motion to.
I already had it written down from earlier, I know exactly what we need to do going forward. I just want to make sure that if I don't get the extra time for any type of warranty, then it's not, then they'll have to come back to you, so. My nature making me forward, that's all.
No, I'm good with that, I'm, I'm good with that.
I mean, I think it feels fine here.
Yeah, you're, you're only cold, it's a sweat. It feels great to you.
We're gonna throw him out of here as well. All right, we got a, we got a motion, we got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven point two, discussion and possible action regarding the first reading of an ordinance to receive citizens' comments to amend Appendix A fee schedule, chapter sixty-two, solid waste, article three, billing rates and fees related to the collection of solid waste.
I may have missed up on the agenda, this should be discussion and possible action, did I miss something?
It's right on the seven point two, it's right on that.
Okay. So this is discussion and possible action during the first reading to adopt the ordinance, so at this time, asking for a motion to consider adopting the ordinance to implement new rates set forth by the con- for con- for frontier waste solutions.
I make, I make a motion to adopt the ordinance to implement new rates set by contractor frontier. Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven point four, discussion and possible action regarding the use of Guthrie funds for Lego kits and tablet. Have a good.
Seven point three, Mayor, seven point three.
I'm sorry. Discussion and possible action to approve the first reading of an ordinance, amending Lampasses Code of Ordinance, Appendix A fee schedule, chapter fifty-four, Parks and Recreation, G golf course fees.
Mayor and Council, this discussed earlier in the meeting, and we are seeking approval for a motion to amend the, or to, a motion for the first reading of an ordinance, amending the Lampasses Code of Ordinance as Appendix A fee schedule, chapter fifty-four, Parks and Rec, G golf course fees.
Go move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now we go to seven point four. Discussion and possible action regarding use of Guthrie funds for Lego kits and tablets, Wi-Fi hotspots, and Dolly Parton Imagination Library.
Mayor and Council, um, Shanda couldn't be with us this evening, they are requesting thirty-one thousand eight hundred, uh, from the, of the two hundred thousand available in the Guthrie funds to support, um, Lego kits, tablets, Wi-Fi, hotspots, Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, and there are sufficient funds to cover that, so tonight, we're, if you'd like to speak up.
Sure, you're very welcome. Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council, thank you for having us, my name's Jennifer Walker, and I am president of the foundation, um, here in Lampasses, which automatically puts me on the Guthrie Committee, and I'm serving as president this year. Uh, we, just to roll the brief history, because I know it's a late evening and it's warm, uh, but this, uh, was established in two thousand seventeen, and, uh, we've done various projects with the funds trying to keep Tracy Guthrie's, um, what she would like to be done. Uh, in twenty twenty, the library park, we purchased furnishing for the park, um, that was fifty thousand dollars in twenty-one. We, uh, matched the gift, which started our Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which has been, um, a big success for the library, but also, we have heard it, um, from our superintendent as incoming kindergartners have come in. Um, so as, uh, city manager has mentioned, it's a total of thirty-one thousand eight hundred, um, and we would be very gracious for that, thank you.
Who to approve the transfer of fifteen thousand eight hundred to the library for the purchase of Lego kits, tablets, and hotspots? Transfer sixteen thousand to the library foundation of Lampasses, access for Dolly Parton Imagination Library.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, um, one thing I'd like to discuss, it was, I mean, I think the committee is great, and I think we need to approve this, but one of the things that really kind of bothered me a little bit is the fact that the Guthrie Committee's having to purchase hotspots to replace broken hotspots, and I feel that that really is something that the city should be u- utilizing for their budget. I think if the library came back to us and asked us for more hotspots in their budget, I think that's something that the city should be doing. The Guthrie Fund should be doing excess stuff, not something that is ongoing for the library. And the hotspots are crucial for our community, and they're always checked out, which is why they're doing some replacement of them. And so I just wanted to get on record saying that I think that we need to really look at that when they come to a texture with their budget.
And I think we have somebody here to address that.
Yes. Hi, I'm Emily Stone, I'm the assistant librarian at the library, and Shanda sent me, so, she sends her, well, hopefully we all send well wishes for her. Um, so the hotspots, just like the Lego kits, as you can see, our Lego kits are from two thousand sixteen. They are well outdated and well-used, our hotspots are awesome along that path. So a lot of the older ones, we're having to try and replace. Yes, we do have some that have not been returned, but a good amount of them, I believe, is just outdated and having to refresh that. Uh, we are currently with our hotspots at our, everything has been checked out. We do have a holding reserve list as of right now. So it's more outdated, and maybe some broken equipment, well-loved equipment. Um, but like you said, it is really well received within the community, and it is really filling a need for a lot of equipment.
Yeah, and it does fill a need, because I know, oh, we have a lot of kids in the school district, because everything is going so computer-based and internet-based, we know how, how that affects us when we go down, and a lot of students don't have. And a lot of students don't have internet access at home, and so if they are having to get caught up or do different things and homework and stuff, a a lot of times I'll tell them, hey, go buy a library, they, you know, they have hotspots, and so I think it's something that we need to really look at utilizing more.
Is that is that something we look at?
We do. Well, I, it would budget season, it's not something we would do right now, it's something that we are just putting in a a plug for when they come back and ask for more on their budget. Do we really think about that, and I appreciate the Guthrie Committee being committed to filling that gap.
Can you remember that to bring that back during budget season?
Our motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven point five, discussion, consider approval of the first reading of a resolution approving Landpasses Economic Development Corporation Workforce Development Training Grant for Landpasses County Higher Education Center in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Mayor and council, L E P C approved a grant request for Elcheck at its February twenty-five board meeting. The public hearing was held before the state law on March nineteenth. Per chapter five oh five one fifty-eight Local Government Code, economic development projects exceeding ten thousand dollars in cities of population less than twenty thousand require two readings of an ordinance of the governing body, or resolution, I'm sorry, of the governing body to approve the project. So this is simply getting that process going um to release those funds to Elcheck once the sixty day waiting period has expired.
I make a motion to approve the first reading of a resolution for Landpasses Economic Development Corporation Workforce Training Grant in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for Landpasses County Higher Education Center.
Second. Any discussion, questions? Mayor, I'm abstaining because I'm on the board of directors. All in favor?
Aye.
Seven point six, discussion possible action regarding the approval of the city of Landpasses contribution to Landpasses County regarding EMS service provided by Hamilton Emergency Medical.
Mayor and council, during budget discussions, the county have requested that the city consider participating in the costs of emergency medical services. Um and I believe that was approved by this council, so the county has requested the money from the city to assist with the payment of the contract for Hamilton EMS. Uh it is budgeted for, this is simply a formal blessing of the council, as you have to approve any expenditures in excess of twenty-five thousand and even twenty dollars.
So this is not an additional twenty-five thousand, this was a budgeted amount. Okay. I make a motion to approve the city's contribution, not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven point seven, discussion uh consideration possible action awarding the lowest responsive bid for replacement of the A W O L system at Landpasses Municipal Airport and upgrade the thunder strike alert and the ultrasonic wind sensor.
Mayor and council, on February seventh of this year, city staff released a notice to bidders for the replacement, relocation, and or upgrades to the airport's current A W O S system, that's the automated weather observing system that pilots can call into and check the weather before they take off or or land at the airport. And it's been down for quite some time. Sealed competitive bids were accepted and opened on March seventh of two thousand twenty-five at three P M. Bids again were accepted for replacement, replacement and relocation, or replacement and upgrade. The city received two sealed bids, one from Mesotech International out of California, and one from D B T Transportation Services in Texas. Staff recommends awarding the lowest responsive bid for the replacement and upgrade, um which is added to alternate bid one two to Mesotech International in an amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred forty-five dollars and to authorize the city manager to execute all related contract documents for the project. Um there was not money budgeted for the ten percent matching grants from the city. Um but uh Iker and I have looked at the airport's budget, there is sufficient money in the fuel purchase budget, since we're halfway through the fiscal year, we're gonna get a half order of fuel once that fuel take um installation is complete. So we feel comfortable transferring money from that line item to cover the city's matching portion of this grant.
What are we doing after right now without with this down?
Um it's just incomplete information that they're receiving, it's really hampered, the pilots are not happy.
Okay. And then this is a little, I know we haven't passed a motion yet, is I I've had so many people ask, why don't we show up on the news reports with weather and stuff? Does this have anything to do with that? Yeah, there's a lot of complaints.
Aaron, is there any way that we can give it to D B T V's, it's a Texas based company, not a California based company, and it's three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Right, so safe procurement law, when you issue the notice to bidders allows you to um in the bid, you have to put it uh that either the lowest responsive bid will be awarded, or the um best value bid will be awarded. Our bidding process does actually identify both, which you're supposed to do one or the other. Um so you can award based on best value, I didn't see anything in the proposals other than if you want to consider the fact that they're a Texas based company rather than California, the best value. And typically, D B T will be the one that's coming to do service on the system once it's installed. So as long as as long as council can document their reasoning for not awarding the lowest bid, we are able to award that. Um especially with such an incentive.
I think having somebody local, basically local within their state, and being able to respond, you know, for repairs or anything else. Uh the chance would be a maybe a little bit cheaper than an out of state company coming in.
I was thinking, Charlie.
I'll make a motion to award the bid to D B T Transportation Services, L L C uh Texas in the in an amount not to exceed one hundred twenty-six thousand dol- five hundred dollars and to authorize the city manager to execute all related contract documents for the project.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Jump down to seven point nine, discussion, consideration possible action awarding a proposal for structural engineer service for existing structural review for the hostess house.
Mayor and council, on February eighteenth of this year, city council requested a stop work order be issued for the existing portion of the Hostess House renovation project, and directed staff to solicit proposals for a more thorough structural review of the existing building prior to work moving forward. I've had several conversations with engineering firms and received the following proposals. L L C Consultant Structural Division, who is the current engineer for the project, in the amount of five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. You guys should have gotten our proposal in your packet. And a proposal from W J E, who specializes in historic buildings for twenty-five thousand. And that was inadvertently left out of your packets, but you should have received a copy of that this um morning. And I did reach out to N Law, but at the to to this point in time, I have not received a response from them um for a proposal. Uh just for the council's knowledge, the Professional Services Procurement Act exempts certain professional services, including professional engineering for traditional procurement. Um so where in our last example, lowest responsive bid or best value, that doesn't necessarily apply to professional services. So the council can make the award based on demonstrated competence and qualifications and fair and reasonable price.
I I I don't know where I'm at here, because the the current contractor won't sign off currently on the new, on on the current part of the Hostess House, but for six thousand dollars more, they will.
Not the contractor, but the engineer.
Art, yes. But the engineer also, right?
The the engineer will will not provide a letter for the existing structural um without it was removed from his scope of work initially.
That's additional six thousand dollars.
Correct.
Uh and and in their letter, it says it appears that it's okay. It appears to to my mentality for public safety, it just doesn't get it, so I would be in favor of the twenty-five thousand dollar uh West Janey Elster Associates bid, just for the fact it seems like the current engineer i- is just trying to get us for a law.
I feel like if we can get the current engineer for six thousand dollars versus twenty-five thousand dollars, and they will sign off on it where they're having to give their sample of approval, which is their license, then I feel comfortable with that.
I agree with that, I feel like it's kind of our fault for value engineering it in the first place. I'll make a motion to award this bid to L L C Consultant Structural Division Inc. in the amount of five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
I'd like to say that um the company that we currently have is willing to do the engineering on it and put their license online for for the cost of all. It was our fault as council, mine as council member for not recognizing that we took that out on value engineering. I think in the best interest of the community um that we put our trust back in the contractor and and move forward with this uh six thousand dollar bid.
I I I personally think that they are uh no matter what they could have said, this building is or is not structurally sound when they bid, whether it was a two million dollar bid or a four million dollar bid. I think uh if you're going to uh repair a community center or someplace for a large group of people are going to attend, and do whatever it is that you're going to do in that building, that you should uh no matter what, granted under license, make sure that it's sound. And for them to hold us hostage for another six thousand dollars, we're making right now say yes it is or no it's not. I I I think it's just uh in bad faith.
Well, in all in all fairness to the L L C, that was one thing that we did strike down, which we should have allowed them to go forward with that. All that being said, you know, the question that I have in my mind is at this point, do we need a third party assessment over the one that uh is offering the, I mean, that's, this is a tough one, and I think I think we're finding ourselves in a pickle on this. We're gonna find ourselves in a pickle on this field, no matter what decision we make tonight.
Yeah, I don't think you can put a price tag on it, I I agree with you, I think an independent third party, however you want to classify it. Um I know twenty-five thousand dollars is a lot more than six thousand, but you cannot put a price on the citizens or the attendee's safety of that building.
But the issue. What I'm having on on this is, is it, I mean, I'm echoing what you're saying, Charlie.
I can argue it either way.
Absolutely, because I mean, I think a third party is great, but at the end of the day, whoever's gonna sign off on this, this is their license online.
Exactly.
And and as much as I'm frustrated as well, just councilman, I'd argue, uh you know, I was part of the council that got us to where we're at right now. Yeah, absolutely, and uh you know, maybe we didn't have all the information, maybe we did, either way, we got egg on our face, and uh it might not, it's not so much L L C that maybe we have a beef with, it's just maybe a lack of information whenever we made our decision in the first place.
It's it's what was requested, that's the key. Did we request a structural, we being the city and council, request a structural, no, we did not, and now we're in that boat, and so this group up to this point has proven reliable, consistent. So why would we spend the extra whenever we didn't give them the chance to begin with to do that?
That's a good point.
That's where I come to you today as well, because I mean, I'm right there with you, they they can't, talking about a third party, I mean, it'd be great, I think, like a nineteen thousand dollar difference.
And I think it's a good faith estimate, or a good faith effort on our part that we have faith in our contract, that's the point. Do I think we need to use a third party? Yeah, I think it probably would benefit us to use a third party. Do I carry a lot of guilt for not doing what the new dealers only did?
Yeah, um but at the same time, I think I think it's important that we try and save a little bit of money, um.
Uh one of the one of the other arguments, I think, that would be good to maybe make on the on the L L C, uh you know, as I sit here and think about this. I think they would have a bee in their bonnet to keep the project rolling rather quickly, whereas if we did go down to the W J E, they could drag their feet and draw this project out a little bit further, you know, there's there's.
Not so much intentionality, just justically.
Logistically, yes. And I'm I'm trying to not, uh because I wasn't on this council, so I'm not trying to to blame you guys whatsoever. I understand the decisions you made were within the formation, but do you think there's any thought of six thousand dollars and then they can get the rest of their guaranteed contract? Does that play a part in anything there, you know?
Like it does, I think those numbers are set, that's two separate, two separate contracts, sir.
If the third party said that the building's not not structurally sound, then that shuts it down, right? But they can almost guarantee they're gonna get the remaining amount of their two million dollar contract by just saying, yeah. I understand the license, I'm I'm kind of playing dead with that, I'm not trying to spread anything.
So this engineer's already been paid in full for the work he's completed on the project, so this.
They're a partner with with the.
Well, sort of.
I'm trying not to, I'm not trying to throw anybody on the bus, I'm just trying to think.
Highly, I'm not part of that one.
Yeah. I I think they're.
It is two different entities, the contractor and the and the uh architect are two different entities.
Which I wouldn't imagine, I could be way wrong on this, but I wouldn't imagine they'd put their license and potential liability on the line just to try to make sure that someone else that was involved in the project finished the pro- that's a that's a realization I've come to today, I mean, because this is tough, because I I feel so bitter about some of this, and like Charlie said, I just don't feel great about it.
Aaron, are you of the opinion they're gonna come in and do a full leather inspection, or they're gonna go off of what they already have and just stamp?
Neither of these are complete full inspections, if you'll read the project proposal on page one forty. Says perform initial and up to two additional site visits to observe and document existing exterior lateral wall systems. Review of the existing wall systems of the original architectural and engineering drawings. A general contractor will remove wall and building finish systems as required. Number three is perform a structural condition assessment of the lateral structural wall system and issue an engineer summary report based on observations of exposed lateral wall structural systems and the original architectural and engineering drawings review. Note that this engineer's report will not include construction documents for the remediation of lateral lateral wall systems if required based on lateral wall system review. L L C can provide a proposal for the lateral wall system remediation if required.
Saying if it comes up that it's not structurally sound, there's problems with the with the wall, then then we're getting a quote for how to mediate anything.
Who who wrote this script? They did?
This is the proposal from the engineer.
Who's in there, L C?
L L C, yeah.
So if that's, if we would award it to W J E, that's exactly the same thing that they would do?
Essentially, um and you should have W J E's proposal as well.
Ms. Corbelle, could I ask you a question of a citizen, would that be appropriate? That's in this industry, Mr. Benny, I I I value you, you've been in the construction industry for a long time, and you've seen the building. Can you come up here and talk on the microphone?
Forget my appearance, I was unloading concrete blocks. On request from the mayor, I walked through the building, spent three or four hours out there, and just my observations were that uh according to what I I'm hearing here, who's gonna be responsible for tearing it down, if you could actually look at it? You know, we need to get under that building, I couldn't get under that, so are they gonna get under the building and actually see where the foundation is? What, do we even know what the found- are these proposals that that you got, does that take into account of anybody climbing under the building and actually being able to see what? I mean, foundations is a key to any building, we all know that, and uh like I said, I couldn't get under there, can't tell, you know. There were so many questions I asked the general contractor about, you know, insulation on the west side of the. insulation on the west side of the wall, insulation added, it's not my scope of work, it's not in our scope of work. Just one question after another, it's not in our scope of work. But when it comes to the structural integrity of the building, uh, to me, it doesn't look sound, because basically, it's just a two-story masonry wall with no brick ties, no, nothing to tie the, it's basically sitting on the ground, it was done seven years ago, or whatever, when I was a kid, just like it did now. Not saying that's not sound, but when you actually start tearing the drywall off and actually getting into the guts of the building, I'm not a structural engineer, I'm just telling you what I saw, and, uh, I mean, I went to my prom dances there, you know, when I was fifty-six years ago, so, uh, we used to have dances up there all summer long, and, uh, it seemed to be okay, that was seventy years ago, but when it gets right down to the guts of the building, I don't know what's there, and I don't know what six thousand dollars is gonna get you, I'm not even sure what twenty-five thousand dollars is gonna get you when it gets into the guts of the building, so.
My concern now is, is we didn't write the scope, so we didn't direct these guys to look at anything specific, nonspecific. Do like you were saying, Mr. Finney, care anything out, I think we should write this scope from, from whoever, and then put it up to bid, because that's a pretty significant difference in, in a bid, six thousand and twenty-five thousand, so.
And part of that may be L O C's familiarity with the existing drawings, since they were a part of that, so that cuts down on the time that they have to spend reviewing those drawings. If you'll look at task two on W J E's proposal, it gets into the detail of them getting into, look at the foundation, cut into walls.
He was actually paying for the cutting, is that the general contractor?
The city is.
So you're gonna have to pay to get into the wall, so, I mean, if.
And then we're gonna have to pay to repair them.
Right, so, I mean, does the, which Jamie Elster Associations, is that included, that removal? You know, most engineers that I've dealt with on old buildings, they actually come in and do their own demo.
Right, they're, they're coming in, W J E does their own, um, says they'll complete a visual survey and discreet measurements of the exposed and accessible structure components at the foundation floors, walls, and roof. Observe conditions and measurements will be documented through photographs and field notes. Assessment will be completed from ground and floor levels with a ladder facilitating elevated access in select interior locations. City will be responsible for providing general access to the building and any locked spaces. Per understanding of the existing conditions, openings will be required to document the construction of the floor systems. W J E is capable of making openings in gypsum wallboard that will require repairs to be made by the city or the contractor for the renovation.
Will we, city will be responsible for the repairs, but not actually demo to, to get in there after to see what's going on, so.
Mr. Harrison, do you mind coming up here? Since you're here. I just, I, I'm trying to get as many opinions as possible to, to vote, the way that, I just, I just see that we have two drastically different scopes worth written by two different bidders that are gonna look at two different things.
That's all mine is, is an opinion, and I went and looked at it, uh, the mayor asked me to go by and look at it, uh, you know, I'm a contractor, I do foundation work for a living, uh, had many, many years of building construction through the fire service. I've spoke my mind on it, the building, in my opinion, and I'm not an engineer, it's not a safe building. Um, I crawled under as much as I could to get under to look at what was lacking there of a foundation. I think if you're gonna have any public access building, that the city's gonna be viable for, that it's important that we're gonna spend two million, three million, whatever, then we ought to be willing to make sure that it's structurally sound and safe. This ain't the place where you save money. That's, again, my opinion.
All right, we gotta make the decision.
I think we need to get clarification from L O C on, I mean, because I'm reading, uh, item number two in their scope, says general contractor removed the wall and building finish as required. Is that included in their red light, the general contractor, just gonna do that and?
Right, so the general contractor.
But is it extra, or is it included in that profile?
It's, it's included in that bid, and then there will be additional costs for the city to repair that. That's the same as W J E's.
And we're gonna have some change orders going forward, quite a few, I'm, I'm sure.
We have other change orders coming.
We have a motion on the floor. And we have a second. And we've had discussion.
And that is for the, the L O C bid, right?
Yep, with the L O C. All right, let's go, let's vote for the L O C. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None of them go away. Discussion, consideration, possible action amending the F Y twenty-five Landpasses C D C budget in the amount of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars and nineteen dollars.
Uh, Mayor and Council, at their February twenty-five board meeting, the L E D C voted to pay off their bond payable in full in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand, nineteen dollars. As the payoff was not recognized during budgeting, a budget amendment is required prior to making the expenditure, so at this time, we, um, recommend approving, amending the F Y twenty-five L E D C budget in the amount of the payoff.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And at this time, the city council of Landpasses will meet and close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, chapter five five one, as follows. Section five five one oh eight seven, economic development, to receive and evaluate and information to receive regarding the rodeo states' development that include agreement terms, financial responsibility, and any other matters pertaining to development. Section five five one oh seven one, one A, and five five one oh seven two, consultant with an attorney, by telephone or in person concerning matters of common with an attorney, has a duty or responsibility to report to the governmental body and/or other matters posted on the regular agenda. Section five five one oh seven four, personnel matters to deliberate, the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties or discipline of a public officer or employee, city manager, and other personnel matters as advised by Texas Government Code, I five one. And at this time, can we get a motion to adjourn into executive session? Go loose. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have one item coming out of executive session. Move to decline the request of extension of terms and authorize the city manager to execute recapture clause of rodeo states' development and economic incentive agreement. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. And at this time, I need a motion to adjourn, second.